Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Acton, Maine for July 8th, 2020. Last week, we played a Pledge of Allegiance by Charlie Daniels. And being honest to us, it would be, you know, well, it wasn't the last time he'll ever do it, but he passed away just a couple of days after that, matter of fact, last Friday. So this week, our producer, Dan, found a nice video, keeping with a pro-American theme, with all that's going on in the country, and just trying to keep everybody upbeat and, you know, we're all in this together, we're all here for, you know, to move forward and hopefully have good things happen. So, Dan has found a nice video, it's a combination pro-America, United States of America, and kind of a tribute to Charlie Daniels as well, but there's also the pledge at the end of it. So, go ahead, Dan, and roll that.
Have you ever spent the late afternoon watching the purple shadows deepen in the Arizona desert? Or seen a herd of elk plow their way through waist-deep snow on a cold Colorado dawn? Did you ever see the sun go down in Hawaii, or see the stormy waves break over the rock-bound coast of Maine? Or have you ever seen an eagle fly up out of the mists of Alaska, or a big October moon hanging full over the still, or the cold Badlands? Have you ever tasted the gumbo in New Orleans, barbecue in Carolina, or the chicken wings in Buffalo? Have you ever had Brunswick stew and macan, or cornbread in Birmingham, or brisket slow-cooked over hill country mesquite wood? Did you ever drink the water from a girdle in Branch in Utah? Stand on the mountain above El Paso del Norte and see the lights twinkling clear over into Mexico? Did you ever jangle horses in the predawn stillness of a perfect Texas day and watch their shod hooves kicking up sparks on the volcanic rock? Or tended a trot line on a foggy Carolina morning, or heard the distant song of a lovesick whippoorwill in a pristine Tennessee late night? Have you seen the faces on Mount Rushmore, or stood at the Vietnam Monument? Have you ever crossed the mighty Mississippi, or been to the Daddy of Maun in Cheyenne, Wyoming? Or seen the mighty Vols run out on the football field on the chilly autumn afternoon? Did you ever see the Chicago skyline from Lake Shore Drive at night? Or the New England foliage in the fall, or the summer beauty of the Shenandoah Valley, or Indiana covered with new snow? Did you ever see a herd of wild horses running free across the empty spaces in Nevada? Or caught a walleye pike out of a cold Wisconsin stream, or marvelled at the tall hips docked in the harbor in Baltimore? Did you ever see the early morning dew sparkling on the bluegrass? Or the winds stir the wheat fields on a hot Kansas afternoon, or driven the lonely stretches of Old Route 66? Have you ever heard the church bells peal their call to worship on a early Sunday in some small town in the deep south? Or pass through the redwood forests as the sun was going down? Have you ever been to Boise, or Baxley, or Beaufort, or Billings? Have you ever passed through Sanford, or Suffolk, or San Angelo? Have you ever seen the Falls at Niagara? The Ice Palace in St. Paul, or the Gateway to the West? This then is America, the land God blesses with everything. And no Eiffel Tower, no Taj Mahal, no Alps, no Andes, no Native Hut, nor Royal Palace can rival her awesome beauty, her diverse population, her monolithic majesty. America the Free, America the Mighty, America the Beautiful. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Dan. That was amazing, I've never seen it before. So, okay. Onward and upward, folks. So, next, let's see, Pledge of Allegiance is done. Town Administrator Weekly Update, Jen, the floor is yours. Follow that one.
Yeah, thanks. What a good guy he was, huh?
Yes.
All right. So, I'm gonna try to minimize my list tonight, because remember, we have a public hearing at 7:00, and for anybody that's here thinking that it's part of it, we'll be leaving this meeting and coming into a whole other one with a link on the town's website. So, first thing is just an update on the election. We wanted someone to take a minute and thank the board for allowing us to close our office the last two Wednesdays to focus on election stuff. As my staff can tell you, that we have been inundated with absentee ballots, which is good, we want to see people out and voting. They have made some changes this year. In the past, the deadline to vote by absentee has been three days prior to the election, so it would be tomorrow night. They've made that change this year, that you can vote absentee right up until and on Election Day. So, that's there. We have over 300 absentee ballots already out. There is a link on the town's website, there's an electronic way, you can still phone in or walk in and get one. So, people have definitely taken advantage of, you know, of this method of voting this time around. So, we think that our election setup is complete as far as the schedule, we have an equal number of Republicans and Democrats, and we are gonna be having a Zoom training class, it looks like that class is gonna be on Sunday, probably around 6:00. So, a majority of my people can make it better on Sunday than Monday night, and quite honestly, I'll probably still be at the town hall anyways. So, there's gonna be a lot of changes for this election, so, you know, there's a lot of state mandates that have been put into place, and I just, you know, wanna urge anybody watching this, or anybody that will watch this, to bring your patience when you come in, if you choose to vote that day in person. We are required to only have a certain amount of people, we're guestimating around 29 people in the election hall, and that includes all of the workers, based on the square footage, based on the six-foot rule. We have had to make a lot of changes as far as closing down every other booth for the six-foot rule, all of the curtains have had to come down, we have to have sanitizing stations at the entrance of the election hall, we have to have a sanitizing agent who is actually cleaning in between voters, we've got all of the partitions up in place for all of the workers, we have two DS-200 machines, there's just, things are gonna look a lot different, and it's gonna take longer, there's no way, no other way to get through it besides the fact that you have a lengthy ballot. So, don't take it out on the election clerk or the clerk, come Election Day, we're doing our best and trying to follow the guidelines, certainly we wanna keep ourselves in all the voter space. So, to the board, if anybody wants to join my training on Sunday night, I always love to have the board be a part of it, so they can see all the details behind the scenes. And the public, of course, would be welcome, they just can't participate. Next item is the H Road Cemetery, I just wanted to let you know that there appears to be a stone that had some damage, one of the residents on H Road came in and had some concerns about what she believed was a veteran stone that had some serious damage, they think because of weather, reached out to the cemetery committee, and they actually went out and fixed it right away and looked at it, so, kudos to them, even though they're not meeting, they still were working on the side, so that was nice. Touched base with the treasurer today, and she let me know that the pre-audit has been done, she did everything electronically with the auditors, she's gathered everything that they requested, sent it off, and pre-audit is done, we are in the process of scheduling audits, they're gonna be doing a remote list, I understand it, as much, based on the email that was sent, they're gonna do as much as they can remotely as possible, I know she's given me a nice list of things to gather, and we'll plan on getting that stuff over to her as soon as the election is over. Last week, it was mentioned that the guardrails, we talked about the guardrails on H Road, Will Langley did reach out to me and let me know that he did reach out to the guardrail company, and that they were going to meet with him as soon as he was back in the area, as soon as they were back in the area. He is on, if anybody wants to ask him for an update, but that came from him yesterday. CMP work schedule, just kind of an FII, we got an email from CMP, this goes to Acton and Chapley, so some of the roads aren't yours, but just letting you know that over the next six weeks, they're gonna be working on Goose Pond Road, West Square Pond, Sandborne Road, Youngs Ridge Road, Great East, Ridley Road, Acton Road, Milton Mills, and what they're calling South Moon Road, I'm not sure where that is, but they wanted the board to know that they were gonna be in that area, working and replacing poles. We're still getting calls in, we're still getting calls in the office regarding why certain businesses might not be complying with the order, with the governor's order, with the 6P, with the mask. Maine Municipal and the state, and the state governor's office have sent out an email with a link on it that will direct you to the non-compliance governor order, it's a place where people can actually click on the link, go out, go in and fill out the form, and there's somebody following up on the compliance end. It's not that we don't wanna take the calls, we just don't have any jurisdiction over it, the sheriff's department has told us that they do, so you can either report them online through this link, or you can call the sheriff's department, and depending on, you know, what their workload looks like, they tell us that they would handle it. I wanted to do a quick shout-out to all the people in Acton that stepped forward when I put the post on about the COVID family, we did have at least one family, and this doesn't mean it's the only case, there was a couple others prior, but we did have a family of six that was dealing with the COVID, that we have rallied the troops, and people are cooking meals for them, got some groceries for them, and we've got the fire department delivering it to them, so that we can keep their name, you know, secure, so a shout-out to the fire department and all the residents that have helped with that. And the last thing I have is, our last couple of weeks, we've talked about computer and a laptop, and Zooming, and who can go from where, just wanted to let you know that should any committee member need one, the school and the IT person over there, Mike Corey, in conjunction with the superintendent, have to put together a laptop with charger and everything ready to go for Zoom, if anybody needs to use it, we've got the library or area in the election hall, so we're ready to set up someone else if necessary. And that's all I have tonight.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave and, Dave and Kim, do you have anything for Jen?
No.
Okay. Okay, next, warrants and bills, I was in earlier and picked up my packet and signed the warrants and the bills and whatnot.
I was in yesterday.
You still need to stop in?
I gotta, I gotta stop in later on, I'm open. Depends what time we get out of this meeting, I guess.
Okay. Okay, do I hear approval of the agenda? Do I hear motion?
Motion to approve the agenda for July 8th.
And I'll second that.
Move to second it to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And then, I'll make a...
Yep, minutes of the last meeting.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st, the Selectmen's meeting.
I'll second that.
Move to second it to approve the minutes of July 1st. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Then I vote yes. Okay.
And before you, I'm sorry, before you go, if I could, I just wanted to, for the sake of your packet, and I wanted to get your permission in advance, we did get two letters from the public, one tied to the transfer station and one tied to Article 43, they are kinda relevant in the conversations that you'll be having, so with your permission, I'd like to read them aloud when you're ready regarding those two and not save them for the end.
Oh, sure. Yep, do them. Is that okay with you, Kim?
That's fine.
Dave?
Yep.
Okay. That works. Okay, Department Heads Committee Chair Updates, we have one item on here, transfer station. And Bob, I think you're with us?
Yeah, let me unmute him here.
Yes, I'm here.
There we are.
Hi, Bob.
Okay. Go ahead.
Bob is...
I was meeting, you got some questions, I guess, I'm open.
So, Bob is here because we've asked him to be here, David and I, and this stems from the Facebook post, so if we can start by reading the email, the Board of Selectmen received an email, may I?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay, so it says, "I'm not one to complain on Facebook, but I just went to the dump for the fourth Sunday in a row, and like every other Sunday, I wait in line for an hour before I even get to the gate. Today, there were cars on both sides of the road and coming in from the top of the hill. If the selectmen aren't gonna do anything to address this huge safety matter, then maybe we as a town need to think about getting traffic to, traffic to prevent any accidents. I have a video of the shit show that was going on 10 minutes ago, but it has swears, so I will not post it. But this is outrageous, and I as a taxpayer should be able to use my own transfer station." I'm not saying this has anything to do with the staff at the transfer station, but this is not the first time the issue has been brought up, now it's more of a safety issue than ever before. So, there was a post online, I think that I sent it to you guys, and I did ask the individual to email you guys directly as well, because, I mean, as much as we try to follow some of the things on Facebook, we don't see everything, and it's not an official page, so, I, we asked Bob to kinda be present, I guess, and walk us through, was this a 4th of July issue, Bob, or is this every Sunday over an hour wait?
Well, I don't think it's at every Sunday, I think the last four Sundays have been that awful busy, this last Sunday was extremely busy, and I contributed, I contributed to being, we were closed on Saturday, and it's the 4th of July, and I think if we'd been open on Saturday, we wouldn't have the problem on Sunday, because a lot of people would've been there on Saturday, it wouldn't have been on Sunday. Well, we were closed on Saturday, so everybody comes on Sunday, and it did, it created a, whatever you call it there, I'm not gonna repeat it, but the show that they had.
A shit show.
It was, it was unfortunate situation. Yes, it was, people parked on the wrong side of the road, I addressed that today, I put cones on the left-hand side of the road coming up the hill, so people wouldn't park going the wrong direction, they'd stay on the right-hand side of the road. But there was, I walked down there, and there was probably eight or 10 cars when I walked down there this morning, waiting to get into the gate. I got another plan that I may have to institute, if we have a problem like that again on a Saturday or a Sunday, we gotta open-top can, I'm gonna have people pulled out of the line and send them down to the open-top can to kind of alleviate some of the heavy traffic coming into the compactor.
How much of this, Bob, is COVID-related? Because now we're only allowing one line at a time, social distancing, keeping the cars apart, how much of that is playing into this?
I don't know if that's, that the, the line is playing into it as far as people being able to throw their trash in, because we've, we've divided the gate in two sections, so that people can throw their trash in from either side, so we can get two cars in there. Roger tells them to pull ahead, they stop, the other guy can pull up, and they can throw their trash in at the other end of the, so I don't know if that's the problem. I think if people just have a lot more trash that they're trying to get rid of, because they're not going anyplace, you know, and they're not going out to eat, they're cooking at home, and there's a lot more, they're creating a lot more trash. So, I think the COVID thing has a lot to do with it, things have changed, you know, the last three or four months, a lot of things have changed, and you see it at the town hall, I mean, yeah, it's, it's COVID, some is COVID-related, yeah.
I can tell you too, before the board jumps in, that from the Chapley side, we also were closed Saturday because of 4th of July, because that is a holiday, and you guys deserve to have it off, you know, so, there's no, no question there, but we had the same issue, I mean, we had a line, you know, up past Boonies, and, you know, we had the same conversation, does that mean, Bob, in your opinion, we should think about opening more hours, does that mean that we need more staff? Or is it just a fluke thing based on a major holiday and our summer residents joining us?
Well, I think it's both, a little bit of the corona and the, and the being closed on Saturday. I think this is a good example to remember, that if 4th of July falls on a Saturday again, or any workday that the transfer station is open, that I think the transfer station should be open, because, I mean, we've got a huge influx of summer people that come up here, and they got a right to be here. So, I think, I think from now on, if 4th of July falls on, 4th of July falls on a day that the transfer station's open, you ought to think about keeping it open, paying your guys, the guys a time and a half, and not end up with a shit show.
Do you think you need more staff on a regular basis, Bob? What about these, all these other Sundays?
Well, staffing really doesn't seem to be a problem, we're talking about traffic, right? We're not talking about staffing.
Right, I'm just reiterating what I saw online, they don't think the selectmen are addressing or willing to give you more staff, or do you think you need to be open another day a week?
No, I don't think that's gonna accomplish anything, and it's gonna create a lot more expense, and there's nobody even putting the budget for this coming year for more staffing or more hours and this kind of thing. You know, I... The staffing issue, I don't think is a problem, we seem to be getting fine, along fine with that, we're getting everything processed that comes into the transfer station.
Dave, you got a question?
Well, I mean, I was monitoring the social media, the stuff blowing up on that, and one of the things that I saw on there, there was a post on there that was talking about how a selectman member, which was myself, was a name, but anyway, they were talking about, I had a conversation with Bob back the summer, a finance committee member had gone up and mentioned that we ought to be putting a road in up there to alleviate, you know, the traffic issue, and back when I had this meeting with Bob, I asked him, you know, is this, is this something you think would be, first, we looked at where the road would have to go, and this and that, and, and Bob, you remember the conversation we had?
Oh, yeah, I had a conversation with you, and I had a conversation with another contractor too.
Yeah.
And, go ahead, Dave.
But at the end of the day, Bob, you know, I asked you, is this, is this, do you think this is needed? And your answer was what?
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's not needed, that would only be for an exit road, and we don't have a problem with people exiting the transfer station.
Just getting in, right?
Especially after they've been waited, waiting in line for a half an hour or 45 minutes to get in there, they're more excited to get out, and they have no problem getting out of there.
So, pretty much...
Exit's not a problem.
So, out of the, out of the entire year, and I hear, hear this, oh, we need more staff, and we need more of this, more of that, out of the whole entire year, we know the winter time, the staff isn't very busy.
Right.
During the summertime, you guys stay pretty steady, out of the entire summer, how many days do you think we have that situation?
Well, I'm gonna say, it all depends on, the weather has a lot to do with it too, if we have a crummy weekend or not yet, if we have a good weekend. So, I mean, we got the 4th of July, we got Labor Day, and we probably got a couple of days in between that are gonna go. So, we don't have a lot of days to have, you know what, what are we gonna do, we're gonna hire more staff for just the summer, and then weekends that we're not really busy, the staff is staying around doing nothing. I think we have adequate staff there now to do the job, and I don't know, is, is somebody complaining because we don't have enough staff?
Not, not at all, there's just...
Why do they, why do they think we need more staff?
Well, there's just, there's a lot of different suggestions as to what could be done to prevent the lines, and, you know, additional staff, additional hours, that additional road, those are all just things that are being brought up, so, I just wanna make sure that, you know, not to take anything away from the Board of Selectmen, but we wanna make sure that the people in Acton, you know, can hear, hear the superintendent that's overseeing that department also feels that these things aren't necessary, you know what I mean? So, I just wanted to cover all bases, Bob.
Well, the only thing that I feel is necessary, and it's a safety issue, and I agree with some of these people evidently that have been going on Facebook and talking about it, but yeah, it's a safety issue when you got cars in the road, you got cars going up and down the hill, and we're gonna try to address that and keep people from parking on the wrong side of the road, and we're also going to try to pull vehicles out if it is a real busy day, pull vehicles out, send them down to the open-top dumpsters so they can dump their stuff down there, so it moves the line along a lot faster.
Kim, do you have anything to add?
No, I mean, it sounds like he's, you know, got a pretty good handle on, you know, what to do and what they're gonna try to do and stuff, and I think it's fine. I mean, I feel like with the 4th of July, that's probably one of the main reasons it was so busy, where you had the day before off and stuff, so...
I've been, I've been up, I've been up there, you know, I don't typically go to the transfer station a whole lot for this year, I've been going quite a bit, and I think it's been great. I get there, of course, I don't, I don't go at prime time, you know, I kinda choose my times when I go, and I think that's a lot of it too, is everybody goes at once, you know, first thing in the morning, so, it's like I used to tell everybody, when I'd bring my boys to school in the morning, when I was bringing them down to junior high in Sanford, if I wasn't at Dunkin' Donuts by 10 minutes or seven, I was gonna be on a waiting line. And so, it's timing, but I, you know, just, just so the public knows that, you know, I meet with Bob, I have talks with Bob all the time, especially up at the transfer station, and I believe it's a well-oiled machine, unfortunately, you're gonna have these, those days when everybody shows up at once, you know, I don't think we ought to be doing some knee-jerk reaction and hiring on a bunch of people and building $200,000 roads to accomplish what? For three to four days a year? Get through, we just, I think maybe what we ought to do is possibly have Will put some signs, no parking, on the wrong side of the road there, you know, I think we could have him do something like that.
But, David, I think, I think, just a, you know, just a couple caution signs, you know, one at the top of the hill and one down the bottom hill, you know, caution signs and...
Put a couple no parking signs up there, and, you know, I mean, I don't think it would hurt, we don't, nobody should be parking on that hill anyways, I mean, that's, that's a dangerous spot, people come down over off the top of the hill, and they're usually cruising right along, and so, and you're right, a caution sign or whatever, but, you know, you put a new no parking sign there, then, you know, you're less, you're more likely that, you know, if sheriff comes through, he can enforce that, and, but, and we do have an ordinance for that.
I put the cones out there today so they wouldn't back on the wrong side.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, I think you're doing a good job, Bob, and, I mean, I understand the concern, that's why I called you yesterday and asked you to be here tonight, just so that you can, you know, we can let everybody know that, you know, we are addressing the issues that we believe we have to address, we can't control three or four days a year, it's just, it is what it is. Newfield had the same problem, right? Newfield, Chapley, the other towns had the same problem.
Chapley did. Oh, Michelle was gonna say something, let's unmute her. Did you go to the transfer station Sunday, Michelle?
Yeah, well, it was busy, they actually, and they were open the 4th of July, they had to close early Sunday, 'cause all of their dumpsters were full, so, you know, I think it's, whether they were open or not, they, you know, probably Acton probably would've had some, you know, problems on Sunday anyhow.
And I, you know, and we, this is a conversation for next year, for the next holiday, but, you know, and it's so good of Bob to make that statement, to make that offer, but at the same time, it's 4th of July, and those guys deserve to have it off just as much, and, you know, sometimes you just gotta wait a little longer, like David said, so...
Yep. I think, I think, oh, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Dave, I just wanted to say something to David about that road situation, and you came up, and I had the other contractor come and look at it too, and, you know, the cost of, no, just a guesstimate, no, no measurements were done and all that kinda stuff, but a guesstimate of $100, $150,000 to put it down there, for God real, all this stuff, for an exit road, and we don't have an exit problem, and it doesn't create a traffic problem when people are exiting, so, I think that we can probably put that exit road to bed for the time being, you know, until, you know, maybe a few years down the road, things are gonna change at the transfer station, and, you know, maybe we can figure everything that's there, but I think it needs to be put to bed at this point in time.
Okay, yeah, I think it was just, it was a case of being closed Saturday, Sunday, you know, for the holiday, being open Sunday, and the folks, you know, that do come up for the weekends and whatnot to their cottages, were open Sunday, so they can get rid of their trash on their way home, which they leave it, you know, they're packed up and ready to go by 11:00 or 12:00, and, you know, that was, I think probably, the first hour or two was the worst. I actually was in line at 12:30, and I was...
Today, today, we opened, we opened 10:00 on Wednesday, and there was a line out to the gate, eight to 10 cars down the road, you know, when I went out, put the cones up, and by 12:00, the line was gone that goes down the road.
Yeah.
You know, everybody wanted to get rushed and get to the dump, and they're there for two hours, and the other four hours, it was, it was a line that went down to the gate maybe, but nothing on the road.
Yeah, I, I was at, I was going down the hill, you know, as you're, as you're heading towards the transfer station from 109 at 12:30, and by quarter after 1:00, I was out of there. I made it, I made it up the hill, in, deposited, and gone, so it was about 45 minutes.
Right.
But, I mean, but when I left, the line out on the H Road was about half of what it was when I went in.
Right.
It was actually halfway up the hill headed to the gate, so it was starting...
Pretty quick.
Yeah, it was starting to go and in through the gate, you know, there was no bottleneck, everything was moving along.
Right.
The only way you could expedite it any quicker is have two drop points, and that's what you're gonna try, so...
Right, we have two drop points, and then we, you have to think about, that's a little, this little thought process goes into that.
Right. Yeah.
But I'm gonna do everything I can to try to alleviate the traffic, a lot of the bottlenecks, so whatever's gonna happen.
Yeah, the problem is, you enter it, you enter the place like you're in... Yeah. Yeah, the problem is you enter it, you enter the place like you're entering England. Everything's, everything's on the left going in as opposed to the right.
That's backwards.
Yeah, it is. It is. So, you know, maybe it's worth looking at the con, the total configuration. But anyway, something to think about. So, anything else you wanna add, Kim?
Nope, nope. Sounds good. Thank you.
You all set, Dave?
Hey, Bob, you're doing a good job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. Anything else you wanna add, Bob?
No, I'm good to go.
Okay. Jennifer, anything?
No, sir.
Yep, no, I think it was just, uh, was just a, it was just the day, you know, the way it is.
We'll get through it.
Keep an eye on it and we'll monitor it for the rest of the summer and adjust how, you know, how it needs to be adjusted. Bob, you, you are doing a great job and you got a handle on it, so.
Okay, great.
Okay.
All right, good night, guys.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Bob.
Good night. Bye-bye.
Okay, old business, Article forty-three.
All right, may I, uh, we did invite the road committee. May I open up the ones that, the road committee people here?
Yes, please.
All right. So I can only, um, go in by based on what I, uh, based on what I can see, um, is Leslie on the road committee? I can't remember.
I think so.
Yes? Obviously she on the road committee. She's my chair. Sorry, Leslie. It's, if it's not election-related, my mind is just, uh, I saw Mr. Ward here. Sorry about that, Leslie. Leslie, do you know who you were expecting? I don't know if you can see some of the names. Some of the, um, I can't tell, you know, like some of them will just say NTAP, so I don't know who that is, depending on their name. Yeah, Missy, Mr. Ward, Mr. Langley?
Um, uh-
I have a David. Do we know, I got a couple of iPads, iPhones?
I think Richard is, but I don't know if her microphone is working.
I'll try to unmute her and see what happens.
Uh, Denny, um, texted me, he was still at work, um, about five-thirty, so he wasn't gonna make it. Uh, I didn't hear from Robin, but I did not hear from Joe.
This is Hart. Can you hear us? She is unmuted, but I'm not sure. All right, so we'll leave the chat screen open. For everybody down there, there's a button that's, you can chat, and that will go to, uh, Dan or myself. So if someone else tied to the road committee is here under a different name, just send one of us a quick message and we'll make sure we get your camera turned on. Okay. Um, all right. So the question that I reached out to, uh, Burke and Clegg about was, why do you want the most recent annual report in the application? That was the question. I reviewed the tape and that I was to ask. And his answer was that he would like to leave it in there because he believes that it validates the official, the officers on the, um, on the committee. He said that that tells you if the W nine and the application are being signed by legal officers. He said that that annual report is sent to the state, they list the officers in there, and that was the only way the town could cross-reference, uh, the signatures of who was applying and who was signing the W nine. And, um, in conversating with the treasurer and proving our numbers, um, making sure that we're on the same page of what roads have been paid out, we talked about this application briefly. And, uh, Michelle did ask if somewhere in those general instructions or somewhere in here that we add in the fact that they need to have a completed W nine, um, as part of the packet turned in. Because last year she did wait, um, before completed W nine a couple of times, um, from the roads and wasn't able to pay them. So it holds up the process. But I believe that's all you asked me to look at.
I think so. I was looking for my other copy here. Kim, you're kind of on top of this. Um, do you recall anything else we were looking for?
I think that was the main. I'm just reading through it real quick.
Yep.
There was, from the first meeting, there was, uh, the one extra word that Mr. Ward recommended we take out. That came out. Um, there was a question on-
Did you add in the, um, oops, go ahead.
No, go ahead, David.
Did you, uh, we talked last week about, um, putting a line in there about, um, the, to have the forms put in before the work is done?
Uh, we did. Yeah, that's not added in there. So.
Yeah.
So somewhere, okay, so somewhere in order to, in order to be eligible, blah, 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 uh, so even somewhere at the bottom, so completed W nine and you want this application prior to any work being started? Is that the consensus?
Yep.
Uh, work to be, uh, to be approved before work to be, you know, started, yeah.
I mean, that way they, they know if they're, they're gonna be eligible. I mean, I, I would think it, it would be in the benefit of whoever's working on their road. At least they would know that, yes, we, we are eligible for this, you know, ahead of time instead of doing the work and then, then doing all this and then going, no, you're not, or, or something like that, so.
And that was a continued conversation you guys have about exempting the few people that applied before you put that new rule in place.
Right. Yeah. We're making this more of a, uh, more of a, more as a grant than a, you know, an application, if you will, or, you know, grants, you always try to get, get the grant before you start the project, so.
I do have, um, I don't know when, when the right time is, um, but I do have a letter as well from the public regarding Article forty-three. Um, you want me to read that and then you can go to the committee?
One other thing we had talked about was under Section four C, taking out the risk level. When did we end up on that?
We, when we went back and watched the tape and read the minutes, there wasn't a, in, you know, there wasn't a decision per se. It wasn't direct instruction to take it out. There wasn't a lot of conversation. Do you, I mean, do you guys recall? Maybe somebody, Leslie and Jay were present. Do you, did we, did they board agree to take that line out altogether?
Uh, they didn't seem to address that at all. I told them, uh, that there was an email from Wendy Garland saying that that made no sense. And it kind of like went nowhere from there.
I thought we were just, just gonna get a yes. We weren't gonna ask about the high, the medium, and the low. That was my way.
The watersheds aren't, the watersheds aren't ranked high, medium, and low.
That's what, right, that's what you were saying last week. So I thought we were gonna-
The whole phrase itself makes no sense according, and, and that's what Wendy Garland had said.
Yeah, I believe we were gonna leave C in there, but we were gonna eliminate the last line where it says if yes. We were just gonna leave-
Right. We don't need to-
Yeah, the great part is identified as having, you know, threats to water quality and completed water survey, you know.
But take that entire line out.
We were gonna leave C in there, but then take if yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if they don't do that-
Take that out of it right out.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, that line is officially out. The addition of the W nine and the statement about, um, the work must, it must be what, pre-approved prior to, how do you wanna word that?
How a grant's usually worded. I'm trying to think, um...
Need to word it in such a way, I mean, they can-
In order to be-
A road association can do whatever work they wanna do on their road, but if they wanna be able to be, able to get some of it reimbursed, the application must be-
So, I mean, the question is, are you gonna look at it after the fact? Would you, you know, that's, because you're saying that they can, they can do it in any, you know, anytime they want. But is the board going to consider the application if they submit it after the work is done?
Well, I think that's what we're getting to. We, we, we would not. It would be strictly before the work's done, with the exception of the few that we have out, yeah.
Right.
Those are exempt, so.
So in order to qualify under funds for Article forty-three, all work, or this application must be received and approved by the road committee and board of selectmen prior-
Prior to work being started, something like that. Yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, a few, uh, not long ago, we had three inches of rain in forty-five minutes. And there was a lot of damage to a lot of these camp roads. Um, there would be no way to get prior approval to help repair that. Um, and it would take several months to get DEP out. So basically, you're saying that, that a, in a situation like that, which, a washout, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be considered? Is that what I'm understanding?
See, we, um, we can look at it just the way, just like FEMA works for the town of Acton. Obviously, if there's a declared event, then obviously, there's obvious something we, we could probably do. I'm sure if it's a declared event, the, the governor does. And, uh, every time we get a, a rainstorm, um, and, and DEP doesn't take several months to go do this. I've dealt with them a couple of weeks, maybe three at the most. But, um, obviously, this is, this is a good, good example of why you come to us. If this happens, come to us with your paperwork. And obviously, you're gonna have to fix it, but come to us as soon as possible. But, um, for the normal projects we're talking about, this is how this, this works.
Right. So I mean, you, so major damage causing from one rainstorm. I mean, and because I know that, uh, my road had major damage and it, it cost us quite a bit.
I thought it was, from what I saw online, it was just Young's Ridge Development.
Uh, no, we had a washout on, on Langley Shores.
I'm sure you did.
Um, and then, and then, so that money would, the money we spent would not be eligible because we weren't even being able to, um, meet your criteria.
I think in the case of something like that, we would have the right to waive that and say, you know, 'cause that, that's something nobody can predict.
Can we put something in this application that if there is-
Unless deemed an emergency, I mean, do you wanna put unless deemed an emergency by the Board of Selectmen?
Right, or, or, you know-
Based on mother nature. I mean, do you wanna say something like that in there?
You know, we, we, the town of Acton, the state of Maine, we, 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 like I said with FEMA, it was the same idea. When there's an emergency, okay, you know, we, we apply for funds, you know, whenever there, it's declared. Every time I have a thunder shower, then, then it's up to us to decide whether or not that was a, a natural disaster or not. Um, I, I just, that leaves the door open that I don't know, you know, maybe a week might be able to make the, the call, but what about the next three selectmen that come in, you know, it, it's kind of a slippery slope.
That's why I'm thinking something should be in here. I mean-
Yeah. It's declared by the state, a state of emergency, just like any, any other town would do. Cause that's how, that's how we roll.
Would this last storm have been a state of emergency or?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Our camp road was just wiped right out, you know?
Yeah, I know. But the thing is that, um, obviously, at that point, the road association gets their road passable. Get your paperwork up. If it's an emergency, at that point, I'm sure three or the next three selectmen or whoever, okay, if it's that big a deal, okay, it's, it's gonna be detrimental to the lake, then we go up and we put it on the priority list. You know, we don't, we haven't got a timeline of how long it's gonna take to approve these, okay? But it's up to the road association themselves to take care of the problem at that moment. It's not our, our job to come in on that.
David, David, I understand that. I mean, and we took care of the problem. We spent almost a thousand dollars to fix the problem.
So it wasn't a very big problem. It was a thousand bucks.
We, we did. We know, we did what we were supposed to do to not endanger the lake.
Yep.
And, um, the application as written does not allow, um, approval of anything the DEP hasn't, or, or York County Soil and Water AWAC Committee and say hasn't been done prior to.
I can guarantee you, if your issue is as bad as you're saying and is so detrimental to the lake, that DEP would be there to check it out. Um, and that call would come. Um, it's no different than all the times I've been up to Young's Ridge. And, uh, so, um, it just, what I'm trying to do here is I'm trying not to make this, I don't want these gray areas that can be taken advantage of. I want everybody on the same platform.
Wouldn't that be why we put something in here? So that there isn't any gray area? Because what happens when we're not here? And, okay, something like that happens, okay, it's a, declared a state of emergency. Um, and they go and they fix it, but the next selectman may say, we don't care if it's an emergency, you did it, and this says, you know, you, you did the work ahead of time, so we're not gonna give you that, that three, whatever you need.
But we're, right now, we're only at, what, three thousand dollars? Is that what we're limited right now? And I, I like to change that. I like to increase that, obviously, but especially for some, especially for this instance here, okay? If it's that bad of a washout, a thousand dollars don't go far, neither does three. But-
No, but I mean, with the three of us, yes, okay, we're saying that, that this is an emergency. But I, I guess I'm just, you know, down the road. Um, I don't know. Well, I do-
And, and just remember, Kim, that this is a, a policy. It's not, it's not an ordinance. So any selectman, anytime could change it. So it's not, you know, I mean, don't let, don't spend too much time on that because it's something that any selectman can change with the majority.
All right.
Jay, you, Jay, you have something you wanna add?
No, I, actually, I just go back to, I don't understand why it has to have the application in before the work is even started. Because-
Grant.
You all, you, but it's not a grant because it's just a part of most of the work that has been done on that road. So the, the work is gonna be done by the road association regardless of whether it is, um, partially reimbursed by Article forty-three. It does, so, by having this in there, it is going to potentially cause problems when you have a rush job because something happened, um, with the weather or with the road. Maybe there was something else that happened on it. It, I don't understand why your insistence in having the application in before.
Well, I think part of it is that we can look at the, look at the road ahead of time and see what it looks like, to see what the repair, you know, what, what the area that's gonna be repaired looks like prior, you know, to a repair being done.
Okay, that's interesting. I, I hope that you all do go to every single road then.
Yep.
Because I-
I did go, I have gone to quite a few of them, so. And the road association as well. I mean, with this, this is gonna be going to you. How are you gonna approve something to be done if it's already been fixed?
Yeah, no, we, we, uh, we had applications come in last year of stuff that was done the prior year. And how do you, you know, after the leaves have fallen and everything else and da, 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 da. And how do we know it was an actual issue?
Yeah.
What we've done here is we-
That's why I'm going on it, so.
With this way here-
We spoke with the lawyer too.
Yep.
You know, he sent us that way. I mean, when, when we first started this, and, and I don't know, I just don't know how we got away from it. Because that was the suggestion when, when this first went through, um, was to do it like a grant process.
So the lawyer said that they have to have an application in before the work is started?
No, no, but to do it like a grant process. And the grant process is like that when you, when you do a grant.
There was a recommendation. It wasn't a directive. It was not a directive.
Recommendation. Yeah.
I hate to rush us on this, folks, but, uh, we do have a public hearing tonight in about eleven minutes. And we've got a lot to get through before then.
You've got the letter from the public.
Go ahead and read that letter, Jen, that you, that you had on this.
I haven't gone anywhere, so. All right. Okay. Good morning to all. I have been informed that Article forty-three will be on the selectmen's agenda tonight. I think it would be beneficial to hear the discussion from both sides. Please consider these facts when listening to their statements. The people at town meeting voted in favor of Article forty-three. The article stated to approve fifty thousand dollars, quote, "to assist the road association in preventing storm runoff pollution from reaching great ponds." The select board's arguments against this are that maintenance is not approved for assistance. The state has not defined what maintenance consists of. In the main gravel road manual, to correct a pothole on a gravel road, you must grade it to a level of the bottom of the pothole. Grading is not approved. So on a graded road to fix the pothole, you are maintaining not to repair the pothole. Please remember the discussion at town meeting stated that the money would be used for grading to repair the crown of the road. The town of Shapley Town Meeting voted to appropriate thirty-eight thousand dollars for maintaining pond roads, including paving. How is it our town fathers say they can't spend money on private roads? In Shapley, the only requirement is an easement. I'm sure residents on private roads would give an easement to have the road filed without cost. The town of Acton is a home rule town. The town meeting can approve anything they want, providing that it- The town meeting can approve anything they want, providing that it doesn't contradict state statute or town ordinance. I would like to see state statute or case law that defines the requirements for spending under 23 MSRA 3106. The town meeting is a legislative body of the town. The selectmen are an executive branch. The selectmen can make policy, but for a town law, it's ordinance that needs to be passed. Selectmen are supposed to execute what the town meeting passes. I would ask the selectmen to continue, uh, to consider putting a revised article in the future town meeting warrant to let the town meeting decide. I hope not one in the winter where some of the residents will have the right to vote taken away because there's no absentee balloting for a town meeting. Best to all, Arnie.
I can answer some of those. Um, first of all, the $38,000, town of Shapley. Unfortunately, we got some uninformed people, okay, because they do, they do grade pond roads. But all these pond roads back in '06, the town of Shapley got easements from all them roads, okay? So both, they're legally allowed to do them. So they're theoretically a town road, but they're not, okay? But they've got easements for every one of those roads. I know that, I used to grade them, I used to plow them. The pothole, this is exactly my point. When you start talking potholes and us maintaining potholes, this is why I'm trying to get, I, I wanting, I, I pushed to make sure that road grading was, was part of maintenance because it is part of maintenance. At the end of the day, the unfortunate part about this is at town meetings, we did not vote on what Article 43 was going to cover. There was no guidelines. The guidelines were done later. They were done then when the auditor and things started. Then we looked at it, we looked at the lawyer's letter, bam, we got to make a change. That's what we're doing here now. But there was nothing ever done at town meeting that stated exactly what was to be taken care of.
Okay. I think we just need to add this on to next week's agenda and pick it up where we leave off right now.
Okay, I'll make a couple of changes and send it back out.
Yep. Jay and Leslie, if you can come up with some wording for something, you know, for, for adding something in here that would satisfy what you're looking for, please get it over to Jen, and she can get it out to us. We can have something more to look at before next week. I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to get voted on this thing quick, you know, fairly soon here. This is, you know, we've, we've held it up long enough, so.
We need a recommendation from the road committee, correct?
I think it would be a good idea.
Well, I think that we should. I don't believe that at this point, it looks like the road committee gets two members to show up at our meetings every week. We can't get any more. I don't believe it's to the, uh, the road committee, the two people on the road commission, committee that actually do anything, um, that it's up to them without the rest of their, actually have any meeting to come up with anything. It's not their job. And I honestly believe what we're going to be doing is dragging our feet here because they're going to change everything that we've done because they do not want to do what we've done. So I believe what we do is do what we did, add the wordage that we put in there. We asked their opinions, they gave it. I want to move this on, I want to vote on this, I want to get some money out of some camp roads.
Okay, here we go. So next week, we'll vote on it. So let's get everything in it we want next week and move it on. So, okay, we're going to move on here. We've got to get some stuff here done before next, before next week, so. Uh, thank you, Jay. Thank you, Leslie, for coming into this. We do appreciate it, so. Okay. Uh, next, new business, abatement.
Yeah, this one, this one's very, this one's very quick. Um, we, we inadvertently billed the days when it's really owned by the plant. It's only $63.26, so looking to abate it so we can supplement the proper ownership.
Okay. Okay, the town of Acton has received the 2019 assessed value of your Acton property. As a result of the review, we have granted an abatement on Acton map 223-004. The reason is, it was, it, original bill, original tax bill was sent to the wrong person. So yes, it's $63.26. What are your wishes?
Make a motion to refund or send an abatement out.
Accept the abatement.
To accept the abatement for $63.26 on, I can't see well, MapLot 223-004.
I get that.
Moved and seconded to grant the abatement to $63.26. Any further discussion? None? Call for vote, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And, okay, and I vote yes. Okay, that's all set, Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, we got to get these done because she's going to need these folks. We have some appointments.
You can do them all at once or only appointed through the end of the month, so I can see how they work out.
Okay, and these are just, let me just get down to the end here. Okay. Okay, does someone want to make a motion? Do you have the? Well, I can actually read these off, so.
Okay.
The, it states, I'm going to leave the name off right now, we'll hit the names in a second. The selectmen from the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as ballot clerk within and for the municipality of Acton, Maine, until 7/31/2020. Given under our hand this 8th day of July, 2020. And we have, these are all ballot clerks, Gail Bovier, Sue Walsh, Shailene. Shailene. Go ahead with the last name.
Gavro.
Gavro, okay. Louis Jackson.
Louise.
Yes, Louise Jackson. Deborah Lowry. And Daniel Crumpets. Those are all ballot clerks. What is your wishes?
So we'll make a motion to accept, um, Gail Bovier. I'll go down through them again, sorry, I got to scroll. Sue Walsh. Shailene Gav, Gav, I can never say her last name. Gav.
Gavro.
Gavro, thank you very much. Can't speak tonight. Louise Jackson. Deborah Lowry. And Daniel Crumpets. To be ballot clerks, um, for the municipality of Acton until 7/31/2020.
I will second that.
They moved and seconded to accept the clerks as, as read. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Call for vote, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Yes.
Greatly needed. Okay, we have Crispy Letter.
Yeah, so I've got two things under this. I'm going to turn his camera on briefly here and unmute him. Michelle, can you do me a favor? Can you just put a quick post in what's shaking, uh, what's up in Acton and just tell him we're about five minutes behind schedule? The public hearing will start in about five minutes. So two, thank you, Michelle. Two things on Mr. Crispy, I failed to mention, I wanted to make sure that you guys saw the Freedom of Information request that he had put through, um, last week on, um, that he put through. He did make mention, and that's why I wanted to make sure that you guys saw it because I didn't see that somebody had replied. But, uh, last week, you know, code enforcement, um, we, they worked, they worked to get him the information. He was called about a half hour, maybe even, if that, before the meeting to say that his information was ready. The problem is, is that with the planning board meeting every week, um, if he continues to have Freedom of Information at the end of every meeting that, and this item stays on the agenda week after week, that only gives code enforcement until that next meeting to get it. So, um, he did, you know, I, he made mention that it wasn't, I don't want to misquote him, but it wasn't acceptable or it wasn't okay that it was, he was getting it with an hour's notice. Now, the flip side of the, the, um, law is that we have seven days. And, you know, we have seven days to even acknowledge it. I mean, we're doing our best, but I wanted you to make sure that you saw that email from him regarding the Freedom of Information. Uh, it has been turned over downstairs. In regards to him being on the agenda tonight, he sent you guys a letter. I forwarded to you, it's dated July 7th. He's got a lot of concerns regarding the, um, shoreline properties and what's going on in regards to Martella State. As your administrator, I'm going to remind you that you don't have the authority to overstep or intercede with the planning board, especially at this point, since they don't, haven't even had their public hearing on it. But take it away, Ed.
Okay. What would you like?
You want to, I mean, I don't know if you want to read his letter. I don't know if you want to let him speak to you for a few minutes, but.
I would just let him speak to us, and if he wants to paraphrase the letter, that'd probably be the best way to do it.
Mr. Crispy.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, uh, board of selectmen. Just really briefly, you know, I was the person who made the post. I actually took a number of the videos and made postings on Facebook, which you got some letters last week. And I just, you know, the letters made you aware. I wanted to also make you aware of the sediment that's being deposited in Great East Lake off of the Martell's, proposed Martella Estates at the lake. And really, you know, you can see the videos, but also, if you would like to see it yourselves, uh, I'd like to make an offer for you to come and view it. Gilia has a glass-bottom boat. It's a modified pontoon boat. It gives really high-quality views of what the bottom of the lake is. And, uh, would give you just the opportunity to appreciate how extensive the sediment deposits are now in Great East Lake. So it's really, it's an offer to you or really any other town employee who would like to, uh, to understand what's going on there. I mean, it's, Great East Lake, as you know, is a jewel in the town of Acton. It's, uh, we calculated out recently about $136 million worth of tax base around that particular lake. And if you're interested in learning more, I'm happy to take you there.
Thank you, appreciate it. I don't have anything else to add to it, so. But, you know, it's really the planning board, as Jen said, the planning board is the ones that follow through on this. We have no jurisdiction over them. Not even guidelines or suggestions or anything like that. You know, things don't go the way that folk like to see it that way. There's also the zoning board of appeals, so. But there's many steps to go through, you know, to get there, so.
And what about the concerns of the Freedom of Information while I have you all three together? Are there any different direction that I'm giving to the department?
Well, it is, I mean, it's, it's difficult to get the turnaround on some of these things. You know, you.
Well, can I just clarify?
Right ahead, yes.
Last week, I received the document 13 minutes before the meeting. It's effectively not receiving the document. And if the planning board is going to meet every week, and you can't get the public the documents so that they can understand what's going on in the planning board, then it strikes me as really being a due process issue. The planning board is typically every other week, and we can go through the normal process. So you've got really a disconnect.
Yeah, I guess I'd need to talk to the chairman of the planning board at some point and see why, you know, why they are meeting every week. They probably are because of the workload, would be my guess.
Right.
I believe what's hap. I think what's happened was with this COVID, then they didn't meet for so long that now they're trying to catch up with that workload that, and, uh, I mean.
But Miss.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, I feel Mr. Crispy's right. He should be, you know, getting it, you know, maybe, maybe an hour or two earlier than 13 minutes before. I mean, I know they're busy, expect, you know, enough time to go through it and look at it before the meeting. You know, I, I know everybody's busy and under a lot of, you know.
And if that's the direction of the board, then the liaison or somebody else needs to support that when I send that email down because, so you're saying that until, as long as this is on the agenda, you want it prepared a day in advance? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I would think, they're there on Wednesdays.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's 24 hours. I mean, it would be nice if they could get it.
Oh, I guess I lost you here. You, you want it 24 hours after the request or is it 24 hours before?
24 hours before the meeting.
Before the meeting, like Wednesday.
So essentially, if they have a planning board on Thursday, and he sends me some sort of request on Friday, you know, on a good day, that goes downstairs on Friday. I mean, you see our logs, we're logging 80 to 100 people upstairs, so I do my best to get it down. I think this weekend, I send it to him on a Saturday or Sunday. So they work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but I just want to be sure that, that if I send that email saying that, that this board supports that.
Well, if they're having meetings every week, then I.
I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I'm just, I mean, you know where I'm coming from.
Right, but I'm just thinking, you know, I mean, if it was every two weeks, then yeah, they would have more of a, you know, more time and, and, but, no.
I, I put a time limit on it, 5 o'clock on, by 5 o'clock on Wednesday.
It needs to be in my possession, okay?
Yeah.
So Mrs. Joyce is on, she's the chair.
Oh, there we go.
Ed, I don't know if you want to hear from her and all.
Yeah, just quickly, Joyce, because we haven't done that.
Very quickly, um, two things. Thank you, Ed, for the way you started the meeting, was outstanding. Secondly, um, we hope to be through with weekly meetings by our July 23rd meeting. They are killing all of us. Everything Jennifer said to you, including her right to respond within seven days, is 100% true. She is doing her best to get everything out as she can, as are the secretaries downstairs. We sometimes, the board, may only get information at 3:30 on Wednesday that we need for a Thursday meeting. So everybody is trying their best. We're not trying to circumvent everything. We got into this weekly thing because of COVID. We went three months without a, a meeting. And I think a little bit of patience on everybody's part would go very far with this. We appreciate all the work and all the concern, um, that is shown by the members of Gilia. We take what they say seriously. I was very surprised to see their fireworks show, in fact.
We got to, we got to wrap it up, Joyce.
Okay, Ed, and, and then, Ed, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Have a good.
So it would only, it would only be a couple, couple weeks then, then they're going back.
Couple more meetings.
Okay, so hopefully, you know, let's try to get him what he needs by Wednesday and, you know, then we'll go back to every.
He'll have what? Yeah, he'll have forwarded to him by 5 o'clock Wednesday night, everything that we have in our possession. Does that make it clear enough, Jen?
It's clear to me, yes, sir. So, Mr. Crispy, I know that you checked with me today. Um, I did buzz downstairs and it was not complete, so I will follow up as soon as I get in the office tomorrow, and I will let them, um, know what the board has instructed.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Moving on quickly here, uh, public comment, do we have any, Jen?
No, sir, I incorporated them in.
Okay, very good. No public comment. Just going once, going twice, anybody in the public? I don't see anything happening here.
No, sir.
Okay, uh, we have no announcements, except we do have a public hearing tonight for the Warren Articles. That's going to start immediately following this. There is another, uh, another link you'll have to go on to, to get to that. Go to the town website, and the link is there. Okay, um, that's all I have. Dave, do you have anything else?
No, nope. I think I'm all set.
Nope, I'm good.
Jen?
No, sir.
Nope, Michelle?
Uh, no.
Nope, okay. In that case, we'll hear a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, uh, July 8th at 7:09.
I'll second that.
Move the seconded to adjourn. Call for vote, Kim?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, once again, everybody head out of this one, go to the town website, get the, uh, link and head back into the, uh, public hearing, with Warren Articles. Thank you, good night, everyone. Stay safe.